Good evening, everyone. For the record, it is 6:00 PM or 6:05 PM on June 21st, 2023. We are at the Merrimack High School Little Theater at 38 McIlwain Street in Merrimack, New Hampshire for a public hearing on the draft state permit to operate for St. Gobain Performance Plastics Application to operate a coated fabric and film manufacturing facility in Merrimack, New Hampshire. My name is Michael Fitzgerald. I serve as the Assistant Director in the Air Resources Division at the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, and I have been appointed by Craig Wright, Director of the Air Resources Division, who is sitting over here this evening, to serve as the hearing officer for today's public hearing. Key department staff here to present information regarding the application and draft permit include Kathryn Beem to my left, Planning Administrator for the Air Resources Division, and Todd Moore, Air Permit Programs Manager, again in the Air Resources Division. We also have other staff, department staff here present to help run the public hearing and to assist with answering clarifying questions. In addition, we have environmental health staff from the Air Resources Division present to better understand any possible health-related concerns raised during the public comment portion of the hearing. The environmental health staff will help with written responses to any health-related concerns that are raised in final documents associated with the Director's decision to issue a permit. This decision, this hearing is being held in person. After conducting a practice hearing here last week, we determined that the utilization of Microsoft Teams in conjunction with other audio and visual media planned for the hearing would result in possible sound interference issues. Therefore, the department is providing access to this hearing using live stream with the help of Merrimack TV. Those watching by live stream do not have the ability to comment on the draft permit during tonight's public hearing. However, since the public hearing, this public comment period is open until 4:00 PM on Wednesday, June 28th, 2023, both those people present tonight and those watching the live stream will have the ability to submit any written comments regarding the draft permit to the department by email to KathrynBeem@kathryn.a.beam at des.nh.gov or via USmail at NHDES Air Resources Division, PO Box 95, Concord, New Hampshire, 03302. Public comments must be received by the close of the public comment period next week. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, ENV-A200 and ENV-C200. As required by these rules, the proceedings of this hearing are being recorded, and all who speak will be required to state for the record their name, their address, and the name of the party they represent, if applicable, at this hearing. The purpose of the hearing is to provide information on the draft state permit to operate and to receive public comments on that draft permit. (cough) Excuse me. Notice of this hearing was published on May 21st, 2023, in both the Manchester Union Leader and the Merrimack Journal. The notice indicated that written comments on the draft permit receive, must be received no later than 4:00 PM on Wednesday, June 28th, 2023, will be considered in the final decision. The process for the hearing is follows. First, Ms. Beem will provide a brief presentation on the draft state permit to operate. Once Ms. Beem has finished, we will see if anyone has clarifying questions on the presentation, though specifically that's for questions that someone might not understand what was presented or whatever. It's not your comment period. It's questions, questions to clarify the presentation. Then we'll proceed to the public testimony portion. To ask questions or to provide oral testimony at this hearing, the department will recognize those attending in person who filled out an orange card. These are available at the back desk. There's also some, I believe, in front here. We have several who have signed up already. And the department will make every effort to hear all comments. Due to limitations on the venue tonight, we must be out of here by 10 o'clock. Therefore, we will wrap up this hearing at 9:30 PM so that we can pack our bags and leave. So therefore, each person will have a five-minute maximum to speak. After five minutes, we'll give you a friendly reminder. The department will adjust the time limit based on the number of commenters. I don't have that many comments tonight. The commenters signed up, so again, I would please ask, if you do wish to comment, please fill out one of these yellow cards, gold cards, and bring it to the front or hand it to one of our staff up at the, up at the back table. So, questions will be addressed by department staff to the extent possible during the public hearing. However, the purpose of this hearing is to solicit and receive comment from the public on the draft permit. The department will address these comments as part of the final documents at the time of the final Director's decision. Once everyone who wishes to testify has had an opportunity to do so, I will close the public hearing. So are there any questions with regards to how we plan to proceed tonight? In that case, we'll begin with the presentation by Kathy Beem.
Thank you, Mike. As Mike mentioned, I'm Kathy Beem. I've been at the division for about 20 years. I've been working on this project since the water contamination issue first was discovered here in Merrimack. The purpose of my hearing or my presentation tonight is really to solicit...
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Okay. Sorry about that. My name is Kathy Beem. I work at the department, and the purpose of tonight's presentation is to really give you a general overview of the facility, the information that we received from the company, the regulatory requirements that are contained inside the permit, and then really to get your comments, questions, and concerns about the draft permit. So I'm going to try to keep this as brief as possible while giving you as much detail as I can. First, I'd kind of like to go over what the facility has for equipment that is contained in the permitting review. Most industrial facilities operate with an emergency generator for emergency lighting, a boiler for heat, sometimes for a fire pump to provide pumping capabilities if there was a fire. That's common in many industrial facilities and even schools have emergency generators and boilers. I'm not really going to focus on that. The facility here in Merrimack also has three or four different coders and laminators that are tied into the regenerative thermal oxidizer, the control equipment. They were not permitted prior to the current permit that they have because there wasn't expected to be any emissions from them, but because they do process PFAS coated materials like in a laminator to assemble them, there may be a slight possibility of emissions, and so they tied them into the thermal oxidizer as precautionary measure. And then after they've made all of their materials, when they want to assemble them to make antenna covers, they have an area where they glue them together and assemble them. There are some pollutants that come from that as well. But the primary focus of the presentation really is about the 10 fabric coders that they have in operation there, as well as a laminator that they've requested to be equipped with an ability to coat, in addition to the 10 that they already have coders, and then two film lines, which are relatively similar, and I will go into some detail about those as well. So those are the main pieces of equipment that would produce the majority of the air pollutants that we're here to discuss tonight. So I'd like to focus on those and the control device, which is a regenerative thermal oxidizer. I'll explain how that works and I'll also talk about the bypass stack because that's also included in the state permit to operate. So for the fabric coders, what St. Gobain essentially does is they purchase their raw materials in totes, they bring them to the facility, and then they formulate their coatings depending on what the final product of, the vendor, the people purchasing the fabric want for characteristics. So they take those raw materials, make up coatings, and then those coatings go into what's called a dip pan. So the feed roll that unrolls the fabric into the dip pan gets coated with the coating, with the coating, and then it goes up through a tower that has three stages designed to remove the water that's inside the coating, so it heats up to a temperature to drive off the water that's in the coating. The second stage then takes the surfactant material that's in the coating and volatilizes it, it drives that off into, into the air emissions. And then the final stage is to actually make that coating centered to the fabric to finalize the fabric that they're making, and then they roll it up at the end. In the past, all of those gases would all go through the same, same stack. It would be very moist and have the chemicals in it, and they would be released to the atmosphere. Now, all of those vents have been tied to a main header, and I'll show you a picture in a little bit about what that header looks like. That main header then goes to the back of the facility where a regenerative thermal oxidizer is in operation. That's the control device. So the primary pollutants that are going to come from this type of an operation are going to be your per- and polyfluorinated alkyl substances, or PFAS, organic compounds that are volatile, so we call those VOCs, and then there's some possibility of hazardous air pollutants and regulated toxic air pollutants that could be in there. So all of these are just chemicals that are in the coating that come off into the air emissions stream. And then because they use fuel in those towers to heat up the towers, there are what is called criteria pollutants emitted as well. So you're going to have carbon monoxide, sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxide, that's that sort of thing, very similar to what the boilers or the engines or your car would emit. The film lines are very similar. They use similar raw materials, they mix them up to make the feedstock, and they put that into the dip pan. The only difference is that instead of coating a fabric, they're coating a reusable carrier belt, and that goes up through the process. And then at the very end, the film is then taken off from the carrier belt and the belt is reused. They have two of these film lines. One's relatively small compared to the other one. The QX Tower has actually five of these towers in a row, so the film will go down through into a dip pan, go up through the tower, and could do that as many as five different times. Sometimes, depending on the product that they make, they use all five. Sometimes they do not. So the same type of operation, same type of emissions are going to come out. These are also connected to the main header, to the control device. So here's an actual picture of the thermal oxidizer up here in Merrimack. I just wanted to point out some of the key parts of it so that when I discuss how it operates, it'll be clearer. As I mentioned, all of the emission points are all connected to a main header. That main header starts at one end of the building where the R&amp;D coder is and continuously goes along the roof line in the front and the back, and each coder, as they come across it, will be connected into the header, and then it comes down to the lower level of the building and out the back. So this, this right here is what I consider the main header. That is the piping that's coming from all of the process equipment to the thermal oxidizer. The main parts of a thermal oxidizer is really the combustion chamber. That's where the thermal reaction is taking place. That's that silver box across the top, and within that box, there are two natural gas-fired burners to create that thermal heat in that area to allow for the reaction. There's also three recovery chambers. I'll talk about those in just a moment. And then if, if any of you were, had heard of the news, last July, they had a fan failure. So each of the towers have fans on them, and they've always had them on there. Those are designed to pull those exhaust streams off the tower, and in the past, it was to the stack. So they, those fans are still in operation, but this other fan, number five in the corner there, that's the main process fan that's pulling all of those gases through the thermal oxidizer. So last July, they had a problem where that failed, and they had to replace it. And then finally, the blue stack that you see in the picture, that's what I would refer to as the main stack. That's where the emissions are measured. When we do stack testing, they're measured right there at that stack, and that's what I will refer to as either post-controlled emissions or outlet emissions. But that's, that's what's going out to the atmosphere. Now, thermal oxidizers are not unique. We have been using them in industrial facilities for control of VOCs and regulated toxic air pollutants for decades. Their primary purpose is to take carbon-based chemicals that are in the gaseous stream, provide heat, which breaks down those chemical bonds into carbon dioxide and water, and to the extent that they drive that reaction as far as it can go, there could possibly be products of incomplete combustion. So if you don't get 100% conversion, you may have some compounds that come off during the reaction. In the case of St. Gobain, they're using it uniquely for PFAS emissions, and so that's what makes this unique. With PFAS comes fluorine compounds that, when they come off, will react with hydrogen in that stream to create hydrogen fluoride, which is a toxic air pollutant that we regulate at the state level, as well as a hazardous air pollutant regulated at the federal level. So as I said, we've been working with regenerative thermal oxidizers for decades. Their primary operating parameters that we evaluate to make sure that they're operating correctly is how much time is the gas in that combustion chamber? What temperature is it experiencing so that the reaction takes place? And what kind of turbulence is the gas seeing within that combustion chamber that ensures that the reaction goes to completion? Typically, VOC controls run about 1,400 to 1,600 degrees Fahrenheit. Because of the carbon fluoride bond that's on PFAS chemicals, the requirement for this particular thermal oxidizer is that it has to operate at a minimum of 1,832 degrees Fahrenheit, or 1,000 degrees Celsius. So that, you'll see that, that temperature referenced in the permit. That's, that's the minimum temperature they're required to meet for the thermal oxidizer. So I won't go into all the details of how it works, but generally speaking, because the gases are going to come in, I have like a, sort of a diagram here of a, of a gray cloud coming in this, you know? And the gases will come in, and then there's what's called poppet valves at the bottom of each of these three recovery chambers. Those open and close to allow the gases to circulate through. So the, the gas will come in from the process, go through the header, come into this first recovery chamber. In that heat recovery chamber, it's getting preheated by the previous gases that were in there, so it's bringing the, the process gases up to temperature. It's also going through ceramic media. That media is what's holding that temperature in, in that chamber when, when the cycle's going through. It also provides for the turbulence. So you've got gases that are coming through that main header, pretty smooth flow, they hit the media, and that changes the direction of the flow so that you have more turbulence within the thermal oxidizer. Those gases then go up to the combustion chamber. There's thermal, thermocouples up there measuring the temperature. There's also the natural gas burners creating the heat in there. And the requirement within the permit is that it has to be in there for at least one second of retention time. That's that time factor of the thermal oxidizer. So that's where the temperature and the time are influenced. So now, as those gases are coming out, they're, they're quite warm. So before they're going out the main stack, they're going to go out this third chamber in my example here and give off their heat, which will then be able to be used to preheat the next round. So as these poppet valves are opening and closing, you've got preheating of gases occurring, but you also have a puff of gas that is sort of stuck in the thermal oxidizer. And the point of having three chambers is so that that gas does not escape through the stack, but instead gets captured in that, that third chamber. It's hard to, it's hard to visualize on here, but basically, it's, it's holding that puff of gas until the next time that the gases flow through that chamber. So here's a picture of the main header on the lower tier of the building. This is where three of the towers in the lower back half of the building connect into the main header. The candy cane stack that you see there in the top center, that is the bypass stack. And as you can see, there's, there's scaffolding there where you can walk by. The black metal that you see there is where the stack test company would put their sampling points. So the gases that are being released through the bypass stack were measured during the stack test because they're also the same gases at the same concentrations that would go into the thermal oxidizer. They're all assembled with, with, with the metals piping, so that the only gases that are going to go to the bypass are going to be the same that would have gone through the thermal oxidizer. So emergency bypass is really critical to thermal oxidizer operation. You've got all these gases that are being piped in through one main header, and if the, the RTO was to go down for various reasons, the gases have to have a place to go. Now, if you look at thermal oxidizers, if you didn't have that bypass stack, you would, you would have the potential to endanger not only the individuals inside, but also around the facility, the process equipment, or the thermal oxidizer. So it's, it's integral to a thermal oxidizer. For this particular one, and if you look at the monitoring plan that was part of their application, there's 11 modes of operation, so there could be startup, maintenance, steady state, shutdown, certain, you know, modes of operation. There's only three that are going to occur when the processes are actually in operation and a bypass is necessary. Those include if the burner shuts off unexpectedly, if there's an emergency shutdown of the equipment, like when the fan failed last year, or if the temperature of the gases coming into the thermal oxidizer are high, and so they have what's called a high inlet temperature shutdown, and that's to protect that ceramic media that's inside of the thermal oxidizer chambers. So there's only three modes of operation for which process equipment would be running and the bypass stack could open. And then if you look at the permit, those are the three modes that are limited to what they can, when they can run that bypass, and they have to keep records of that. So I'm not going to go through all of this. We received an application back when we, when the bypass stack was identified, and we requested that information. We also got a, a application for their initial state permit to operate because they had satisfied all the requirements of their temporary permit, and so currently, they're operating under their existing temporary permit until such time as we act upon these applications. We've reviewed two different stack test reports, one from the 2021 stack test and one from 2022, along with air dispersion and deposition modeling that their consultant had done as a result of those stack test results, the monitoring plan that I talked about. And then they also requested in April that one of their laminators that previously just applied pressure to two low, you know, to layers of fabric and film to make product, they wanted the additional ability to add a dip pan to be able to coat on that. That adds about 7% more surface area fabric that they can now process, and so that was evaluated in this permit as well. We reviewed, like I said, all of the monitoring plan information, the stack test reports. We calculated emissions or reevaluated their stack test results for air emissions. We looked at their deposition and dispersion modeling, but our modeling unit also redid all the modeling to make sure there was, everything that was in there was accurate and followed the guidance of EPA. We reviewed all state and federal regulations that apply to this facility, and then we prepared the draft permit that you're commenting on and being able to review. Tonight, we have the public hearing, and then as Mr. Fitzgerald mentioned, the public comment period ends next Wednesday, June 28th. There's a lot of rules and regulations that apply to them. I'm really going to focus on three. The whole premise of having a permit back in the 90s when it was ChemFab was because of what we call our volatile organic compounds reasonably available control technology rule, so I'm going to talk a little bit about VOC-RACT. They also have to show compliance with our air toxics regulation, which is a regulation that comes out of state statute, and then, of course, the PFAS rule that was, PFAS statute that was passed by the legislature in 2018 that applies to them and requires the thermal So let's start with VOC-RACT. VOC-RACT is really a rule that is designed pretty much to, to control precursors to ozone, and there are certain requirements if a facility has the potential to operate above 50 tons per year or below 50 tons per year. This location has always had a facility-wide limit that they cannot operate above 50 tons per year VOCs. During the early days, they also had individual device limits of 10 tons per year for those devices. That requirement was removed when they expanded in 2002, and that meant that they were then subject to VOC limitations within their coatings. Those limitations and work practice standards have been in their permit now since 2002, and they will remain in their permit because once you're subject to this rule, no matter how much your emissions go down, and as you can see in the last few years, the VOC emissions have gone down below 10 tons per year, but they're still required to meet the VOC content and work practice standards under those rules. There's also a federal rule, the federal rules that trigger if you are above individual hazardous air pollutant levels. So if you are above an individual HAP of 10 tons per year, or all of your HAP emissions are above 25 tons per year, you're subject to a certain set of federal regulations. They have taken and have had this limit since the 90s to not go above those levels. And I have got a table here demonstrating, we, we took a look at 10 years' worth of actual emissions, and I, I have here that highest year of what actual hazardous air pollutant emissions that they had. So for example, ethylene glycol is their highest HAP emission, and in the 10 years that we looked at the numbers, they were at most 2 tons per year. Since they run about 50% of the time, calculating out what they could have potentially run, had they run all the time, 24 hours a day, every day of the year, they would have been around 4 tons per year. Again, their limit is 10 tons per year for that individual HAP. And then if you add them all up, their, their actual highest emissions of all of their HAPs was around 3 tons per year, which is well below the 25 tons per year. So this regulation, as I said, it's more of a threshold to trigger certain requirements, and they've stayed well below those. The state air toxics rule is applicable to facilities throughout the state. It is a rule that shows both the compliance methodology and the limits that people can be exposed to at, at the property boundary from, from breathing in over 600, I think it's almost 700 RTAPS within that regulation. I won't go through all the detail in here, but we looked at RTAP emissions from the antenna coating line, which is that piece of equipment at the end of the process, as well as emissions that would come from either the RTO stack or the bypass stack, so any combination of emissions. And we looked at that increase of 7% fabric that could be coated as a result of their wanting to add that dip pan to that one laminator. And what we have found is that all of their emissions evaluated at highest potential emissions were below those ambient air limits, so their emissions are able to comply with the state air toxics rule. So the final regulation I want to talk about is, is the state statute that requires the best available control technology be installed at the facility to control PFAS emissions. When the temporary permit was issued, the regenerative thermal oxidizer with those three chambers was deemed backed, and it was required that that thermal oxidizer operate at a minimum temperature, as I said, of 1,832 degrees Fahrenheit with a one-second residence time and an inlet process gas airflow rate of less than 70,000 standard cubic feet per minute, which ensures that, that time in the, in the thermal oxidizer. It was also required to operate in accordance with approved monitoring plans. So since the temporary permit was issued, they have been submitting updates to their monitoring plan, and then under this application, they submitted a complete monitoring plan, and that includes not just monitoring the thermal oxidizer, but monitoring and maintaining the main header going to the thermal oxidizer, the capture of fugitive emissions at each of the towers to ensure that they are not going into the building and instead are going through that header to the thermal oxidizer. There's maintenance requirements, there's monitoring, there's record keeping and reporting. It's, it's a pretty in-depth monitoring plan. They have to ensure, as I said, that they're capturing the gases going into the thermal oxidizer from the devices, and then they have to operate the RTO at all times, and as I said, bypass stacks are necessary for operation with thermal oxidizer. So the permit limits that operation to 175 hours a year, and only under those three modes of operation I talked about before. And then there are also individual PFAS emission limits that are on an annual basis in the permit there for the four PFAS compounds for which an AGQS exists, because the statute says you cannot cause or contribute to an ambient ground or quality standard problem. So those limits are in the permit for that purpose. How did I come up with those limits? How did the department do this? I'm not going to go through all of this detail, but the stacks, as you notice, the, the main stack, you know, is very tall, it's straight. The bypass stack is candy cane, it's sort of, you know, is horizontal in some respect. They has different parameters in terms of flow and buoyancy and exhaust parameters. We used air deposition modeling, which looks at the building, the stack parameters, the terrain of land masses around, five years of meteorological data, and what that model predicts is how much PFAS would deposit on those receptors that we put into the, to the model. So one square meter receptors out around the facility all the way out, I think several, several kilometers. I don't know the exact number on that one, but the highest amount of PFAS that would have come from the main stack, if they were emitting... if they were emitting 1 gram per second, so this is just, you know, putting in a unit of emissions, predicts about .2 grams in that square meter over the course of a year. So if they emitted 1 gram every second for the entire year, the model predicts that at most they would have .178 grams landing in the, the square meter area that has the highest predicted emission or deposition. The bypass stack, because it's candy cane and is closer to the building, has a little bit higher impact, unit impact rate. That's about .9 grams per meter squared. So using those deposition rates and the 175 hours that the permit allows for bypass operation, we back calculated how much rainwater landing on the ground, infiltrating into the ground with those PFAS compounds that are predicted to land on the ground, and what are the intention of the permit limits are, is to keep that concentration of PFAS below the reporting levels of water sampling methods. So between three to four, three to five parts per trillion is what the evaluation was done on. Using that, we back calculated what the emission limits would be, and these are the permit limits for the four compounds, PFOA, PFOS, PFNA, and PFHXS. .69 pounds per year of PFOA, for example. Then we calculated what their actual emissions were based on 2022's actual emissions from the stack tests and how many hours that they actually bypassed. So in the first year between July of 2021 and July of 2022, they, they bypassed about 60 hours during that timeframe. So that was when the equipment was first coming online, the operators were getting used to it, there were some, you know, mechanical issues that they were working through. Since then, for the last year, they've, they've bypassed less than three hours in that same, you know, 12-month period. But when we calculated the actual emissions in 2022 based on all of that information, these are the actual emissions of PFOA. So for example, the calculation for PFOA was that they were about .01 pounds per year in 2022 with a limit of .69, so significantly below the permit limits. Okay, so how, how do we know that the thermal oxidizer is operating and operating correctly? So during a stack test, we make sure that the operations are done at worst case, you know, most emissions, most equipment running at their highest capacity. They have seven thermal couples within the thermal oxidizer, calculating in, it's measuring temperature every minute and then averaging those seven thermal couples across the, the device, and they have hourly average temperature limits in their permit. So they're required to monitor temperature. The inlet process gas airflow, so you know that the gases are actually going to the thermal oxidizer, the natural gas flow to the burners, so you know the burners are on. So all of that is recorded within their computer system. Then, in the event that they have a period where an hourly average is below 1,832 degrees Fahrenheit and it lasts for three consecutive hours, then they're required to notify us. Under all circumstances, if they have a temperature below 1832, they're required to keep records, and they're required to mitigate those issues. But reporting to us that they're at 1,830, 1,831 degrees for an hour is not as, it's, it's, we needed to have a threshold at which reporting would occur so that we, we had information if it was going on for more than a significant period of time. For the bypass operations, they're monitoring similar information, again the process airflow, the length of the bypass time, what mode of operation the RTO is in, because they're limited to those three modes, the emission units and then that are operating, and then individual and running totals of PFAS emissions. And then they're required to report to us if they have a bypass that lasts for more than one hour with a formal report within 10 days. And then the stack testing requirements, we have a requirement to test inlet and outlet of the RTO. We're requiring the use of OTM45, which is a stack test method from EPA, but we have a caveat in the permit that says that if other stack test methods come out as they're developed, we have the ability to require those methods as well. They have to do an annual capture efficiency test on the, on the devices to make sure they're capturing it, and if they choose to not want to do the stack test every year for capture efficiency, they can install pressure gauges to monitor that pressure continuously. But either way, they have to confirm capture efficiency during each stack test. Right now, the stack tests that they've conducted in 2021 and 2022 were under the temporary permit. If this permit is issued prior to September, then the, the stack tests this year will be the first of, under this permit, and they're required to conduct at least two consecutive ones, and if those are, emissions are below 75% of the emission limit, then they are, in the draft permit, allowed to go to every three years of testing. But it returns to annual testing if they go above 75% for any of those PFAS analytes. So as I said, we have the draft permit and application review summary out there. The review summary gives a lot more detail and explanation. We're in the public comment period, and then the director's decision is required to be completed within 30 working days after this evening. So with that.
Thank you very much, Kathy. So again, at this point, we will take clarifying questions. If you have questions with regards to Kathy's presentation, again, this is not the time to comment on, on the permit. Once we complete any clarifying questions, then we'll open it up to public comment and follow the order of the yellow cards that we've received. Again, if you would like to comment, please fill out one of these yellow cards. If you came in late, there are some up front and there are some out back at the table. So again, we're, we need to be out of here by 9:30, so we're going to allow five minutes for public comments, five minutes each. So first of all, are there any questions with regards to Kathy's presentation that she can clarify, or? Yes, go ahead.
Good evening. Nancy Murphy, 20, Brendelane. Thank you for taking my question, Kathy. Just a clarifying question. When you mentioned around the mitigation relative to temperature in the, in the RTO, you said if it goes below 1832 for three consecutive hours or more, there are mitigation taken, there's an expected mitigation for when that temp is below that. My question is, what is that mitigation, and how does DES know that that happens?
Okay.
Thank you.
So as I said, they're measuring temperature with seven different thermal couples and averaging it across the entire thermal oxidizer, right? And they're getting hourly averages. If an hourly average is below 1832, then they're required to take corrective action immediately. There's certain things within the monitoring plan of what kind of things that they could do corrective action for, but basically what they have to do is just increase their set point so that it, it heats up higher than where they're currently operating at. If they, if it goes on for more than three, three hours of, three one-hour averages, then they have to report to us. But they have to do that corrective action and record keeping at all times. It's not, it's just the reporting level is three hours. That's the distinction.
Hi, Rose Marie Rung, 21, Ministerial Drive. I also represent Merrimack as the state representative. Kathy, on slide 18, you had shown how you had calculated what the limits were going to be, and you based that on the ambient water, groundwater quality standards. And then you, you back calculated. But are you assuming that the groundwater before you have the leachant is at zero PFAS, or it, it's a blank essentially, or what happens if there's already PFAS in the groundwater because, and, and you're still getting disposition?
Thank you for your question. So it actually is not taking into consideration existing groundwater levels of PFAS. It's simply looking at if rainwater lands on that ground and the PFAS that's predicted from the model is at its highest point, what would the concentration of that be added to the groundwater that's already there? And that, and the intent is to have the emission limits limit the concentration of that rainwater that's collected that PFAS to be less than reporting levels, just for the rainwater landing on the ground. It doesn't take into consideration anything about what happens after it goes into the ground and what's existing for standards. So it's, it's trying to prevent the emissions from contributing to an existing problem, not taking into consideration existing groundwater levels.
Do you anticipate that would change if the EPA MCLs get passed into law next year or later this year?
Well, there's a lot of steps between when EPA actually passes the MCL and then adoption here in the state, and I, I probably would defer to our water division as to how that process goes. But if EPA finishes a, a regulation and if that is adopted as an ambient groundwater quality standard, then yes, they would be subject to whatever that groundwater quality standard is. As I mentioned, we're comparing it to the reporting levels, which are in the three to four parts per trillion range anyway, not the ambient groundwater quality standards we have of 11, 12, and 18 today. So we're already, we're already limiting them to tighter concentrations.
Okay, thank you.
And are there any other clarifying questions? You have to be agile.
Trying to. Well, Fran von Schoen, 4, Conservation Drive, and I want to expressly point out that I speak as a private citizen when I ask these questions, since I'm also on a board here in town. There was a slide about the, let me say that the sensor array that, you know, the thermal couples and flow meters and a couple of things that are being installed as part of this, or have been installed as part of this permit application. Anybody that deals with industrial controls knows that they're not really that hard to work around. So is there going to be any kind of, you know, surprise audits or any kind of validation that guarantees that the data that's being reported to DES is correct?
Right. So-
And, you know, watchdog features in the software, for, for example, or, you know, any kind of reporting system that guarantees that there's not any data feed being, you know, applied to the sensors, for example?
So the department always has the right to go in and do an inspection? We also reviewed records on a regular basis, so there's that. But then they also have a monitoring requirement that was established in their monitoring plan by the vendor of the thermal oxidizer, how often you have to check and maintain and, and do repairs and whatnot. Those records can be reviewed as well. But I'll give you an example. Recently, they had a bypass that lasted, I think, a couple of minutes, and it was, they shut down because there was a high temperature reading on one of the thermal couples. They shut down, and they tested out the thermal couple, and they determined that it was actually, it was faulty, so they replaced it. So we, as a department, requested all their maintenance records of what was going on prior to that, when they did their annual check last year and whatnot. So we went through and asked those types of questions and really evaluated that when we had, and it was only for a two-minute bypass, but we still asked for that information about, are they maintaining the thermal couples? And they're also inspected by the thermal oxidizer vendor on, on a regular basis, so that too is a kind of an independent set of eyes as to whether they're maintaining it the way that they're supposed to. But yeah, they have records for all that monitoring, and we can inspect it anytime.
I guess the question is, is somebody even capable technically to, you know, assess whether or not code has, you know, any kind of watchdog function disabled or bypassed, or, you know, does DES has that capacity to even read PLC programs? Or a contractor that is, you know, contracted by, by, by DES?
I think the people, well, I'm Todd Moore. I work in the permitting group, and where Kathy used to work. This project will be transitioning to me. But that would be a question really for our compliance assessment folks who are much more technically oriented in the operation and monitoring equipment. So we can't answer that tonight, but we know that that's a question, and we'll find a way to get an answer out, out to you.
It would be interesting for people that are, you know, involved into technology to maybe have some insight in that. Thank you.
We'll, we'll take that as a comment and, and try to attempt to address it in the future.
Thank you for having us here tonight in the evening, so we can, I'll come after work. I appreciate that. I just wanted to ask a question for clarification, kind of dovetailing off Representative Rung. So I guess my question is, if, if we're not considering the background level of the groundwater that we're adding this theoretical 3.4 parts per trillion of groundwater impact, what would, there would be no difference if, say, the background level for PFOA was 10 parts per trillion, and then this 3.4 was added? So you would, you would theoretically be approving a, a system that would take a compliant groundwater condition and make it non-compliant? If the background level was 10 and it bumped it up to 13.4 by adding the 3.4? I mean theoretically, is that, is kind of what we're saying, right? Is by not looking at the background level, you could be sort of rendering theoretically a compliant groundwater condition, non-compliant with this permit? So the fact that the groundwater is already contaminated orders of magnitude above that background level is just kind of being ignored, I guess. I, I think that needs to be factored into the situation a little bit there. But unless I'm misunderstanding, I guess that's what I'm-
Thank you for your question. Let me, let me see if I can better explain the modeling, because I know I kind of stumbled over that one. So the model itself, we put receptors, we have a grid of receptors all the way around the facility, every meter. And this particular, like for example, the unit impact rate for the main stack of .178 micrograms, the red, the red number, that was the highest amount of PFAS that was predicted to occur in that square meter. Elsewhere around that square meter, everything was less than that. But we're assuming it's all that, right? So we're, we're taking the highest impact. Then we're also looking at how much of that actually infiltrates into the ground. We're not taking into consideration how much stays with the, with the soil or actually goes into the groundwater or any kind of dilution of other groundwater that's coming into the system, like, it's, to some extent, a simplistic analysis, but it's basically looking at PFAS concentration that would be added to. And yes, it's comparing it to the reporting level of about three parts per trillion, but for example, if you look at their actual emissions, their actual emissions are, you know, a couple orders of magnitude below this limit. So even though they're allowed to that level, the actual emissions that are coming from the facility are way, are much less than that.
But, but they could increase up to that maximum level in the permit, right?
And I, I think maybe we could take that as a, as a comment and maybe try to explain that a little bit better. I-
Yeah, that's fine. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So let me just, so I understand you want to have an evaluation of how this limit is not additive to what's already contaminated in the soil or in the groundwater?
Yeah, I guess my concern would be if somewhere else, there's a company that wants to set up one of these facilities, and the ambient groundwater is, you know, at, close to the limit, and then my concern is, does this type of emission, would it, would it cause the groundwater to then be out of compliance? It just doesn't make sense if something could be approved that could cause a condition to be rendered out of compliance. That's my question. Thanks.
Are there other clarifying questions? All right then. We'll now open up the hearing to allow any interested parties in attendance to provide oral testimony. We ask that those testifying come up to the speaker here, again, at the front of the room, so everyone can hear their question or comment. Just a reminder that before each person testifies, they must state for the record their name, address, and the name of any party that they are speaking on behalf of or representing, if applicable. In addition, those individuals who plan to testify orally are encouraged to submit their testimony in writing also. And again, that, the cutoff date for that is, is next week. I'll go over that again at the end of the hearing. So I'm going to use the orange cards, and I'm going to ask for testimony in the order in which we receive the cards. Some people signed up because they need to leave early, so I am going to try to respect that. Again, we will limit your testimony to five minutes. I'll try to give you a gentle reminder at that. We don't have that many cards, so, but we, we do have probably eight or 10 here, so we'll try to, try to keep, respect the, the time limit of five minutes. So first with that, I will call up Michael. It looks like, and I'm going to apologize on me, on my pronunciation all night, but it looks like Strunkal, Strun, Strunzel?
Strand.
Strand? Okay. Well, I tried. And you introduced yourself to me before the meeting, so I should have known.
Sorry, sorry for my bad handwriting.
Yeah, go ahead.
So my name's Michael Strand, I live at 10 Cooper Lane, Bedford, New Hampshire. I am the appointed citizen representative on the state PFAS- I am the appointed citizen representative on the State PFAS Commission, and also a Bedford Town Councilor. Although I should note that I am not speaking on behalf of the entire town council. To the best of my knowledge, they would agree with most of my statements tonight. I want to thank DES, Air and Water Divisions for their efforts, and what, in my limited experience, have been good faith partnerships. I also want to acknowledge that there are many people, both in this room and not in this room, who've been engaged on this issue and directly affected far more than me. I believe that what has already happened, air that's already been emitted for the last 20 years, and the drinking water, groundwater, and subsequently, human beings contaminated, must be considered in the decision whether or not to grant this permit, this permanent air emissions permit to St. Gobain. While I understand mitigation provisions, including the thermal oxidizer, are in place, there are people in this room, in our towns, both here and in Bedford, who after 20 years, cannot on doctor's orders afford even one-tenth or one-one-hundredth of one parts per trillion exposure to PFAS or any PFAS chemicals in their water or blood. They cannot be exposed to any, zero. So, how then can we justify granting a permit allowing two pounds of PFAS or Gen-X or PTFE, or even remotely PFAS-proximate chemicals to be emitted? Even if we agree and believe that DES and St. Gobain have taken good faith efforts to mitigate, filter, or destroy the majority of harmful toxins, hormone, and immunodisruptors in the air they emit, how can we justify further emissions with any risk, with any trace of PFAS, until full remediation occurs? Until every well is remediated, every point-of-entry treatment system installed, every MCL in every affected area, both inside and at the edges of responsible defining boundaries, arrived at by consensus? Until the groundwater management zone is fully negotiated and implemented? Until health studies and data gathering are complete? How could we ethically move forward now with this permit? In a national, industrial, and regulatory landscape where production of PFAS chemicals will be discontinued in the coming years, how could we dare issue a permanent permit for air emissions or a plant that utilizes any PFAS, Gen-X, or PTFE? In addition, taxpayers already polluted and infringed upon by St. Gobain air emissions via groundwater contamination must indirectly fund regulatory enforcement by DES staff, time, and efforts. We come back to this problematic recurrent theme of taxpayers subsidizing our own corporate chemical pollution. No matter how much or how little PFAS is emitted, how many compounds, no matter how degraded, filtered, diluted, or diffused, this should be ethically, legally, and practically unacceptable. I would reasonably implore DES to issue a temporary hold or indefinite stay on this issuance until we achieve the aforementioned research and remediation goals together, as a public-private partnership, as a community, and as a state. Even if St. Gobain meets legal requirements for this permit, I do not believe that DES or this government is legally obligated to grant it. In any democracy or community, the requirements for public health, general well-being, and the constitutionally guaranteed rights of life, liberty, in this case, freedom from chemical pollution, and the pursuit of happiness, in short, the general good, must exist as precedent to and supersede bureaucratic regulatory legality. If New Hampshire exists as a constitutional legal entity with inherent explicit constitutional protections and responsibilities to its people, then legally, any electoral body or legislated regulatory statutes concerning compliance must proceed from, first and foremost, the people. In this case, I believe if DES chooses to follow the law, you will be breaking it. By risking further harm to the people the agency and government are designed to protect and represent by granting this permit, you will not only violate the most sacred provisions of the New Hampshire Constitution, but do further irreparable damage to the public trust. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next commenter would be Rose Marie Rung, State Representative.
Hi, my name is Rose Marie Rung, 21 Ministerial Drive, and I'm a state representative for the town of Merrimack, which is Hillsborough District 12. I have three comments. One, there was a condition in the draft permit that would exempt St. Gobain from annual testing as long as they go, I think, more than two tests within the permit. I would ask that we delete that from the permit and we still require annual testing. I think with St. Gobain's experience in Husick Falls, New York, and even in New Hampshire, I don't think that we should trust them to be able to be compliant on more than what a statutory testing would be for a year. Second is, I am concerned about the number of hours that the bypass is allowed to operate during the year. I think that should be limited. One, because the limits on PFAS that would be in the air permit is reset every year. But PFAS is cumulative, it doesn't go away. So, whatever pounds are being deposited in a year, that's going to stay there, that's not going away, it's not going to degrade. We know from our experience in Merrimack that PFAS just becomes cumulative and builds and builds. I actually think a more reasonable and limit that would safeguard human health would be non-detect. I know that's a hard thing to do, but I think the health of our state, our people, is much more important than the profits of a company. And I, and along that line, I just want to mention that the EPA issued a new health advisory for PFAS this year in the parts per quadrillion range. And, I think, holding St. Gobain to a permit level that's based on parts per trillion is not protective of human health. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to recognize Paul McHalee.
Good evening. My name is Paul McHalee, I am the Town Manager for the town of Merrimack, 6 Husick Lake Road. Thank you for having this public hearing in Merrimack, we appreciate it. Basically, I only have a couple of comments. One comment is, was breached, talked about a little bit, and that is the EPA, and understanding the process with EPA. But as I read the permit, it doesn't require a reopener from the state of New Hampshire on this if the levels do change. I think it might be a good idea to put a reopener in the application. The other thing that I do see in the application as well is that there's no date. So, once they get this application, it's good forever. And I think that maybe state needs to start looking at this, and because of the problems with PFAS, and because of the problems we have had in the past, maybe a time limit of three years for the permit, or something of that sort, to go through. The third thing is, is that the hours, we talked about the bypass hours. It's more of a request, and I know it can't be put in a permit, but when St. Gobain does use their bypass, more than two minutes. But when they do use their bypass for an hour or so, if they could just notify the town, because we get the phone calls first. There are people in the area that do smell it, and they call and say, "St. Gobain's bypassing, what's going on?" And of course, then we have to say, "Did you call DES? Call DES on this." And it's kind of a burdensome... I know they have 24 hours to report it, however, we do get the calls first of our citizens and our citizenship. So, those are basically the three major points, and you'll be getting our written testimony as well. But if you could look into those three points, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Can you respond on the time?
While we're getting lined up for the next, I might be able to answer a couple of those comments. Response on the timeframe for the permit, were you talking about an expiration date of the permit?
Something of that sort, yes.
Okay.
Because it's open-ended right now.
Okay.
And it doesn't specifically give a termination date of the permit, it's just open-ended right now.
So, this is, it's a draft decision, so there's no expiration date on it. State permit to operate, any state permit to operate, if issued, is valid for five years from the date of issuance, and there's a required process for renewal. And I think you had also had a question about, you know, if new standards come down the pike, you know, and this, and the permit, for example, is good for five years, what does that mean? The permit would reflect, or all of our air permits reflect the state of the requirements upon the date of issuance. Now, if there's a new law or a new rule that applies to a facility that has an air permit, the applicability of that law or rule is in the law or rule. So, if a law comes out next year that says, that impacts this facility and this permit, they would have to comply with it. Eventually, air permits catch up with that. We have provisions whereby we can, meaning DES, can prompt a change in the permit prior to the expiration date. So, if there's something that we think, there's a law out there that has a new provision, they're subject to it and have to comply, whether or not it's in the permit, but we want to, you know, get the permit squared away so that everybody is fully aware of it, we can initiate that process to amend the permit.
As long as there's safeguards in there, that we're not tying our hands, and they can't go back and say, "Hey, wait a second, we've seen it, I'm sorry."
Yeah.
I know this is being recorded.
Appreciate you remembering.
Lots of practice. We've seen it here in town where things have happened, and we don't want to drug up the past. The past is the past. We're hoping to move forward with this and to get resolve for our citizenship. And just because we say that we have this stuff, doesn't mean that all the time that some people play by those rules. So, we do appreciate that, hearing that, that it's a four or five year. Like I said, it was a draft permit, we understand that, but reading it, people don't understand that it's just for five years, it looks like it's open-ended until whenever. And the other thing is, not seeing the reopener specifically in the permit at this time, it just seems like St. Gobain would be good for X amount of years to operate, even though the levels are lower. And that's really not what we're here. We're all here to make sure that people in Merrimack, Bedford, Litchfield, you name it, have clean, safe drinking water, and can move on and feel that the environmental services, as well as the town, is being protected.
Yeah.
So, thank you for your answers.
Thanks for the good questions.
Next, I'd like to recognize Mary Beth Raver.
Hello, good evening. I am Mary Beth Raven, and I have lived at 9 Four Winds Road in Merrimack for over 30 years. And I'm here tonight to encourage you to consider denying the state permit for St. Gobain to operate the coated fabrics in films. Residents of Merrimack have been exposed to PFAS for more than 20 years, as you know, both via water and air, and we knew now that PFAS are toxic. We know that there is continued research, for example, the EPA recently issued new guard guidelines about parts per quadrillion. So, we're not really sure how dangerous they are, even if current standards are met. My story's personal, and I'm about to give some graphic medical testimony. My husband had testicular cancer, and I'm concerned that the PFAS chemicals in our air and our water, which has been linked to testicular cancer, may have caused or contributed to it. Testicular cancer grows very quickly. I encouraged my husband to go to the doctor because I thought something was wrong, and he returned from the doctor visit visibly upset. He had been diagnosed that day with testicular cancer, and surgery was scheduled for the very next day, because this type of cancer moves so quickly. Once a diagnosis is made, an oriectomy, which is the technical term for having your nut chopped off, is done as soon as possible. In our society, we have lots of euphemisms for testicles, nuts, balls, the family jewels, but we really don't talk seriously about testicles very much. I'll never forget the doctor coming out of surgery, holding a big white metal pan with my husband's bloody testicle in it. It had been sliced in half, and he showed me all the tumors. The worst part was, though, they weren't sure they got everything, because it spread so fast. He needed radiation as well. The radiation rendered him sterile, and he missed more work because the radiation made him very tired. Testicular cancer had a profound effect on my family, our relationship, and maybe even his career, due to missed work. Now, we were fortunate that we already had two children, so the fact that he couldn't have any more children was not a huge blow to us, but it might be to some people. This kind of cancer could occur in a man at any age. The high school boys who have been going to high school here for their whole lives have been exposed to PFAS in the air and the water. How many of them might get testicular cancer? Imagine if you were in your 20s and found out that this cancer made you unable to ever have children? Or if the cancer spreads to both testicles, and both needs to be amputated, you'll never be able to get an erection. Our reproductive health is important. How could the request of a company be more important? How do we, as residents, benefit from granting this permit? Are a few jobs worth losing the ability to have children? Is a little bit of tax revenue more important than the ability to make love to your spouse? How much are the family jewels worth? I think we'd all agree that they're priceless. So, I'm asking you to consider denying the permit to St. Gobain. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to recognize State Representative Nancy Murphy.
Good evening again, Nancy Murphy, State Rep. and Town Councilor here in Merrimack, but I'm speaking just as a citizen. Again, thank you for the presentation, and perhaps having done a presentation for our 737 PFAS Commission just a couple of weeks ago, I think. Before this permit is issued, I would just like to ask that you take some things into consideration. I have a couple of comments and concerns. Given what we know of the negative health impacts of PFAS, and exposure and the contamination that we have already had in this town, a priority for residents here are the health concerns associated. We know that no amount is safe. We know that we're only regulating for, right now, PFAS, and we know there are many, many thousands more. We know the kidney cancer rates here are already elevated, and that just this session at the House, we had to move, in concert with DHHS, to file a bill to fund a Phase 3 feasibility study for, to investigate our kidney cancer here. And I thank people from DHHS for help with that, it's really important, but it's really sad that we have to do that. We know that, regarding the PFAS emission limits, the permit is really only looking at the four regulated PFAS, when we know that the emissions from St. Gobain far exceed that. The issue of compliance, given the history that we've had here in Merrimack, remains an issue. Trust is a huge issue. So, the checks and balances, and feeling that we can be confident that St. Gobain will self-report, that the data that you get is accurate, is something that we're not so convinced of. We need to start utilizing the precautionary principle, especially given the long-term in-going exposure we've had here. I agree with others who've talked about the length of the operating permit, the question of unannounced testing by DES. I think it's great that we're asking St. Gobain for numbers and data, and we have, you know, things scheduled, but, you know, sort of like when I worked for DTCYF, we see different things when we're in an unannounced home visit than we do when things are scheduled and planned. And I know staffing is tight, and, you know, that's something we really have to work on as a legislature, but if ever there's an important, you know, staffing is important around compliance issues, we certainly need to have that in this town. The results of the testing, in my opinion, should only trigger increased testing in the event of exceedances, and not decreased testing just because something is compliant at a particular time. I know, you mentioned five years is, it would be the permit length, which I think is too long, but just because something's within an expectation or an expected range, I don't think we should then say, "Okay, great, you did so good, now we're going to trust you" going forward, because frankly, we don't. The conditional permit relative, of course, to the EPA health advisories, I know it's a process and it's going to take a while, but let's face it, we all know this stuff is not good. We all know it's toxic, we all know, and we are living with and paying for... We all know, and we are living with and paying for the consequences of production practices in this town over which we've had no control. So I think, you know, putting limitations on a permit, when we hear the word permanent, you know, an operating permit, it's really scary given our history, and that's only the history that we know about since 2016. So that would be my input, and again, I thank you, and thank you for trying.
Thank you very much. I would next like to recognize Nicole Janus. Is that correct?
Hello, I'm Nicole Janus, and I live actually in Manchester, New Hampshire, across the I've been affected by St. Gobain and what they've done to the surrounding towns. It's disappointing to see that there isn't even an option for this company just to keep going and going and going, and permit or no permit, what's happening and what has happened is just insanity, and it's so sad, and it's so dangerous, and the human beings around here are affected. I ask that you deny this permit because human beings are getting sick, and I wanted to introduce you to my, this is my husband with his three babies, his three boys. He had kidney cancer because of St. Gobain. He's doing well, and I'm very grateful. This is my son, Dominic. He was 11 years old when St. Gobain got him sick. My neighborhood is covered in cancer, and it got my son. I am, by the grace of God, here with him today, and he is in remission, but for how long? If he's still breathing this air? How long are we going to have to breathe this air, drink this water? How long are we going to do this before we just stop it, just get them out? Just what, how much value is it to let this company just keep harming human beings? This is my family. I pray to God that my son grows to be old and gray, and I pray that my husband gets to see his boys turn into men. Please deny this permit, please.
Next, I'd like to recognize Lorene Allen.
I'm Lorene Allen, 16, excuse me, I'm a little emotional after hearing that last testimony. 16, French Court, Merrimack. I am a citizen advocate, a co-founder of Merrimack Citizens for Clean Water, which founded as a result of learning seven years ago of this horrific and vast contamination of many, many pathways that have affected this community and at least five additional, and we know it goes on and on from there. I am also the citizen advocate on the HB 737 Health Commission, and I have worked on this issue for countless hours on a local, state, and federal level. I believe strongly that we need to stop the source. That's the simple testimony. Some of you may recall, in 2018, I worked with Andrea Miko at PES to engage the EPA to have them start a series of citizen listening sessions, the first of which was in New Hampshire at Exeter. Merrimack TV graciously recorded that. At that event, we had countless citizens come from these communities to share stories of cancers, of health, and conditions that they truly believe are a result of this exposure. I am the mom and wife of a highly exposed family. We all have impacts from St. Gobain. When I learned in 2016 that they had been on a reduction plan for air emissions from 2003 on, I was stunned. I thought, how can you be asking people to reduce chemicals that we know are toxic instead of stopping the source? As I learned more and more and more over the two years after that, I realized water, soil, air, food chains, biosolids that the town had no reason to believe were anything other than what they, you know, created there, full of PFAS, all of it, or waterways that broke behind my house, and our bodies, full of these chemicals. The medical advice from the ATSDR, the CDC, the NASEM, Physicians Advisories, and our own hard-working New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services says that we must stop our exposure is step number one. How can we stop our exposure if the source continues to operate? They are undeserving of this, you know? I'm not in support of this operating permit, but I'm not naive. I know that corporations have rights. I've learned over the last seven years that corporations have more rights than we do as individuals. This community, as you know, has done an amazing job stopping our exposure, the water alone, what we have done and what we have accomplished. At the beginning of this journey, the EPA had 100 parts per trillion for PFOA and PFOS combined as their recommended health advisory for safety. What a joke, right? Then it went to 70, that may. You did not have any legislation directing you. The legislation that you have over the last few years is due to citizen-fueled activism, grassroots from communities, residents and elected officials who all work together in both parties to pass laws. They were not sufficient. We know they're not sufficient. It's all we could get done. Over the last few years, we're stalled. All we see is funding getting through. We do not see anything else regulatory. In the meantime, the EPA is working to do the best they can. They face the same obstacles as we do, immense lobbying efforts from very, very powerful chemical corporations and manufacturers and users of PFAS. That is what we're up against. There are ADEFs, there are environmental engineers, they're smart, they're charismatic, and they're convincing. The more we learn, the more we have to realize this is, as Nancy said, and other people have said, this is about the health. This is about our exposure. There's 190 PFAS, according to the EPA, coming out of those stacks, total organic fluorines. We can measure for those. You can require that they test for those. Before we had laws, DES stepped in and took the authority that they have, and you do have the authority to go above and beyond the EPA. Every state has that, and you know this. You made St. Gobain and everybody else comply or MVD shutting down wells over 70 parts, 70 parts. Now, at this point, what I hear is, you know, St. Gobain will say they're following the law. They've said that all along. They've said that to some of us face-to-face. It's an arrogant and appalling statement to make to impacted communities. You have the authority to do more than regulations tell you. I wonder what you would be doing here today and where we'd be at if we never passed or conquered, never passed, that inadequate air bill that was first proposed to really stop PFAS. It was then pulled from committee through procedural BS, to be honest, and it was reintroduced a year later. The amended bill tied it to water standards. Before, we had MCLs, when they counted on much higher MCLs, but through citizen action and informed, highly self-educated people who are like myself, we're not scientists, I'm a social worker. We worked, we engaged in that process, and we got that PFOA down to 12. That was the best we could do. The EPA is proposing four, but the health advisory says .004 parts per trillion. In the beginning of this mess, you held St. Gobain to a standard of the EPA Health Advisory of first 100, then 70. Everyone is ignoring the EPA Health Advisory. It's .004. It's based on sound, rigorous science, and impacts and critical endpoints and vulnerable populations. I stand before you as a member of a vulnerable population. I'm a strong, hard-working woman here in New England, you know, but I have, I know I'm vulnerable. We look at not if, but when. We watch a progression of illnesses in our families, we hear the stories from our neighbors, and we remain a PFAS-exposed community. It is time to stop the source. It is time to consider exactly what is coming out of those stacks and what is still spewing onto the roof and going into storm drains and all of that stuff. We know what's there. We know there's more than four, and we need to regulate to stop our exposure, not reduce. If we had done something about this in 2003 or not allowed it, where would we be today? And where would we be if we didn't have the regulations that people worked hard to get through? Would we be saying, well, we can't really do anything about it, there are no laws? Or would you be taking the action that you know you can? You know, you have to really consider the health and wellness and impact financially, economically, and the health of people in this community. We are broken, and we need you to stand up for us, not just make sure St. Gobain complies with regulation that we all know is not adequate by any means. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to recognize, looks like Sally Deb-Custon. My apologies.
I live at 118 Joppa Road in Merrimack. Given that the most recent EPA advisory basically states that no amount of PFAS levels in drinking water is safe, Merrimack residents and the surrounding communities should no longer be exposed to any additional PFAS chemicals emitted from St. Gobain. In considering this permit, all of the PFAS chemicals that are emitted from St. Gobain should be considered, not only the four that are covered by the state regulations. Since the latest EPA advisory about safe levels of PFAS chemicals in drinking water is based on the most recent data, it should be given a lot of deference in considering this permit. And I also now understand that St. Gobain has started using Gen X chemicals, and the data suggests that carbon filters, which many of us have installed on our homes, do not sufficiently filter these chemicals, and it is unclear to me whether the mitigation system at the town level filters these chemicals. Merrimack residents deserve an end to all PFAS discharges and emissions and the toxic chemicals that result during combustion in the PFAS filter, as well as to be protected from exposure to Gen X chemicals. Allowing this permit will allow harm to continue and set up residents and the town to always be chasing chemicals and installing mitigation systems at the public's expense and only after years of harm. Thanks.
Next, I'd like to recognize Austin Black.
Austin Black, also of 118 Joppa Road. Clear link has been shown between previous St. Gobain emissions and an increase in harmful pollutants in our town drinking water and air. Given the latest EPA goals of zero parts per trillion for many of these, an allowance of 175 hours per year, and the use of the bypass tax for an annual emission limit of between seven tenths and a pound of only several of the many contaminants is unacceptable per Table 5, Item 5 of the permit. While it's unclear exactly the degree to which even emissions below these limits will impact our air and water, the label of forever chemicals these substances carry should raise alarms for any non-zero allowances. There's still much to be learned about the existing and future chemicals and substances that may be emitted. Merrimack prides itself on being a town, a wonderful town to raise a family, yet children that enter this very building unwillingly consume some of these chemicals and risk continuing to do so. Our beautiful state also prides itself on the abundance of our natural resources, flora, fauna, streams, lakes, mountains. As horrific as the impact the citizens have been, we're also only one portion of the environment which is affected. We should continue to protect these resources to the best of our abilities for generations to come. Minimization and mitigations, not a sufficient approach, particularly until more of the unknowns associated with these substances are resolved. I hope these comments are considered for this permit and any future permits. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the last card I have. I just want to remind people, if there's anyone else that wishes to comment, you still have the opportunity. The yellow cards are in the back and the front, so if there's others that would like to, like to continue to comment, suggest that you pick up a card, bring it to the front here. So other than, unless there are others, this is our last commenter, and that would be Ray Breslin.
Ray Breslin, 3 Gary Drive, London, Derry. We've heard some very powerful comments here tonight, and let me just say, I'm not a scientist, I'm nobody in particular. I do happen to be on a local London, Derry Water Committee, but I'm speaking as a citizen. What we're talking about here is the protection of citizens, particularly the children, okay? This is unacceptable to continue to allow this company to continue to put out emissions, any emissions at all that we are dealing with at this present time. This is poison that is in the water, it's in the ground, it's not going away, and we got to deal with it. We got to put in water lines that are going to take years and years. We have people on wells that are contaminated, that they're going to have to put filtration systems on that may or may not work. Then we got to get rid of carbon filters and throw them into a landfill so they can leach out more, or maybe they're not going to. Let me tell you, the primary purpose of government is to take care of the health and welfare of the citizens, job one. And you folks from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services do a very good job. I'm not here to complain about the job you're doing because you're trying to do an excellent job, but unfortunately, we have others that apparently have the money to push the agenda on something like this. I'm suggesting that, as far as I'm concerned, assist and desist orders should be put on this company, and it should not be, we should not be spending, you know, we can get federal money to put in water lines, that's not free money, that's tax money that somebody paid for. There's no such thing as free money. And we're dealing with this, we're going to be dealing with this for the rest of our lives, and to allow this to continue is totally unacceptable. Our job as responsible adults and government is to protect the health and welfare, and particularly the children. I mean, I'm 79 years old. It's not about me. It's about the children that are going to be drinking the water, breathing the air, and this is totally unacceptable. I appreciate the job that you folks are doing, you're trying to do a good job, but there's no amount of poison that's good. I think this should be denied. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Shannon Chandley. I live at 3 High Meadow Lane in Amherst. I represent the people of Merrimack, Wilton, Amherst, and Milford in the New Hampshire State Senate. And I- State Senate, and I was here to listen tonight, and as I know you are too, and I think that almost all that can be said has been said, so I'm really just asking you to please take very seriously and into consideration all of the powerful statements you've heard here tonight. Again, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Again, we have time. If there's anyone that would like to, like to comment, again, fill out a yellow card. Seeing no one else, then I guess this would conclude the testimony portion of tonight's hearing. Again, I appreciate all of the thoughtful and, again, I would say, very respectful comments. We appreciate that. I'd like to make a couple of notes before we officially close the hearing. The deadline for submission of written comments regarding the draft permit, again, is 4:00 PM next Wednesday, June 28, 2023. We will take these comments that we've heard tonight, but we'll also accept written comments. If there's other things that you think of between now and next Wednesday, you can submit those, again, by email to Kathy Beam. I'll repeat her email. It's katharine dot A dot beam, B-E-A-H-M, at DES dot N-H dot G-O-V. Or you can submit them by mail. Again, they must be received by next Wednesday at NHDES Air Resources Division, PO Box 95, Concord, New Hampshire, dash 0003302, dash 0095. Also, just to reiterate, the process moving forward, once the public comment period closes, the department has 30 working days, as Kathy showed you, to review all the comments and issue a final decision. A copy of the final decision will be available on the NHDES website. Again, this concludes tonight's hearing, and thank you all for your time.